As we begin this public hearing, we have the continued agenda. There are three items on it at this time. We are going to further continue item number one on the continued agenda. This is Norfolk Premium Outlets for the following applications on property generally bounded on the north by Command Corporate Center, Office Park, and South Cape Henry Road; to the east by the City of Virginia Beach and other properties of the city of Norfolk; to the south by Lake Wright; and to the west by Interstate 64 and other properties of the city of Norfolk. These three applications, one was an amendment to the general plan, second one is a zoning text amendment, and the third one is the change of zoning to apply the overlay district and to change the properties to commercial. We are going to continue that item until May 22. The motion is therefore... Oh. Wait a minute. Let me stop and do something first. How about a roll call?
Roll call.
I'm sorry. Dr. Newman?
Present.
Mr. Law?
Present.
Ms. McQuillan?
Here.
Mr. Hales is absent. Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye. Here.
All right. Now, we will go to the motion on the item that I noted. This is Norfolk Premium Outlets. Motion to continue the item until a public hearing to be held on Thursday, May 22, 2014, at 2:30 PM in the city council chambers. Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Aye.
Ms. McQuillan?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, Lenny.
That brings us to the second item on the continued agenda. This is by DSF Development LLC for a change of zoning from conditional C2 corridor commercial and R6 single-family to conditional R8 single-family on properties fronting 200 feet more or less along the western line of Brockwell Avenue and 250 feet more or less along the eastern line of Frizell Avenue. Premises numbered 453 through 467 Brockwell and 446 through 464 Frizell Avenue.
Thank you, Lenny. And here to speak in favor of this application is Mr. Robert Feinman.
Just before we do that...
He'll give us a question.
Yeah. Okay. Hello, Commissioners. The item we have before us today is a change of zoning from R6 and a conditional C2 to a conditional R8. As some of you may know, this item was continued from last month's meeting. It was continued so that the applicant and the neighborhood could work out further details. To give you a breakdown of this application, it's located over in the Glen Rock neighborhood, south side of Poplar Hall Drive, bounded by Frizell and Brockwell Avenue, just south of Military Circle Mall. It is all currently vacant, and we will get... I will show you another picture, but the northern half is zoned commercial and the southern half is zoned residential. As you can see in this map, although the colors are a little faded, the white slash yellow, whatever you all can see, is zoned R6. The northern half is a conditional C2, which allows office and retail. The request would be to change some of the conditional C2 to our conditional R8 and the rest of the R6 to conditional R8, as you see bounded under the proposed. Here is a sketch site plan of the project. You can see a thick dotted line, which is the bounding line between the C2 and the R8. And so you can see that approximately, not approximately, two lots are converted from C2 to R8, and the rest is R6 to R8. I would like to say that this is a conditional rezoning, and so the conditions that are being proffered by the applicant is firstly that the houses will go through the planning department and be designed to fit the character of the neighborhood, and the second proffered condition is that there will be curb and gutter put in along Frizell and Brockwell. Any questions?
Any questions or Commissioners comment? Mr. Feinman? Thank you, Ash.
Yep.
My name is Bobby Feinman with DSF Development. We are a local builder specializing in providing affordable...
Mr. Feinman?
Yes, sir.
Your mailing address, if you would, please.
Sir?
Mailing address?
Oh, 4873 South Oliver Drive, Suite 103, Virginia Beach, 23455.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Bobby Feinman with DSF Development. We're a local builder specializing in affordable infill workforce housing. We've established very strong ties to the community over the last 12 years, building and selling several hundred homes throughout Norfolk, primarily to first-time home buyers. We're very proud of our reputation in the community as a quality builder, providing exceptional value. In addition, I personally am deeply invested in the community. I volunteer over 1,000 hours per year in Norfolk, serving as the head football coach at Ruffner Middle School. It's my privilege to be able to mentor and counsel a wonderful group of young men, assisting and guiding them to achieve greatness in life. Today, I'm here seeking your approval to rezone the subject property, fronting Poplar Hall Drive between Brockwell and Frizell Avenues in Glen Rock. The contract that I negotiated with the seller, Calvary Revival Church, is contingent on 10 R8 residential lots. This was based primarily on the agreed purchase price. After submitting the application to rezone the property, I immediately proceeded to contact the Civic League. Planning gave me the contact information for the president of the Glen Rock Civic League, and I made numerous telephone calls to set up a meeting. None of those calls were returned. A week before last month's scheduled hearing, I was informed by planning that they had accidentally given me the wrong contact information, and they provided me with the correct contact, Mr. David Hicks. They told me that Mr. Hicks had contacted their office about the project. I immediately called Mr. Hicks and met with him on the same day. I was invited to speak at their monthly meeting, which was the Wednesday night before last month's session. I met with the Civic League and made my presentation, answered questions, and listened to their concerns. Their two main concerns were parking on the street and road and drainage needs throughout the neighborhood. Late that evening, an email was sent out from Mr. Hicks to the Department of Planning supporting the project. The next day, shortly before the Planning Commission hearing in March, an additional email was sent out by Mr. Hicks expressing concerns about the number of lots in the project. Mr. Hicks and I spoke minutes before the session began, and he asked me to reduce the number of lots. As a result, I decided to defer a month until today, such that all parties could come together to discuss the issues and hopefully come to a successful resolution. A meeting was scheduled for two weeks after that that also included Lenny Newcomb from the city. In that meeting, it was made clear that the Civic League would like to see the number of lots reduced, and there was heavy emphasis placed on the need for road infrastructure improvements throughout the neighborhood. As a result, I went back to the seller. I informed them of the Civic League's desire to reduce the number of lots and asked for a price reduction to accommodate that request. The church agreed to a price reduction that allowed me to afford to reduce the number of lots from 10 to 9. This was a good faith gesture on the seller's part to accommodate the request of the Civic League. Last week, I met with three board members of the Civic League. I informed them that I was able to reduce the number of lots from 10 to 9. I was then asked to reduce the number of lots to 8. I told them that that would not be possible without an additional price reduction from the seller. I was asked to approach the seller again and make that request, which I promptly did. The seller has declined to reduce the price any further. In addition to reducing the number of lots from 10 to 9, I approached Planning and Public Works and informed them that road infrastructure improvements were a high priority in the neighborhood in the Civic League. I asked what roadside improvements could be made on the project. Public Works recommended curb and gutter be installed. As a result, I have changed my proffers to include the installation of curb and gutter in front of each house. I'd also like to point out a few property facts in the neighborhood that I feel are relevant to this project. To date, there have been 17 rezonings to R8 residential, resulting in 37 new R8 lots in the neighborhood. In addition, over 40% of the properties in the neighborhood that have homes on them are R8 or less in width. 50-foot lots are the standard in Norfolk, and Plan Norfolk 2030 supports this development in Glen Rock. In conclusion, I can assure you that this will be a first-class, quality project, developed and completed by a committed, qualified, caring builder. I've heard the Civic League's concerns, and I've taken action. I've reduced the number of lots from 10 to 9. In addition, I've offered to install curb and gutter on the project. Although I can't solve the road infrastructure needs for the entire neighborhood, I know this proffer is a significant step in the right direction. Staff is recommending approval of this project, and I am asking you to support that recommendation. Thank you for your time, and I'm standing by to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Feinman. Any comment or question from Mr. Feinman, from Commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you.
Here to speak against this project, Mr. David Hicks? Mr. Hicks?
I wasn't scheduled to speak, but since you called me, I'll go ahead and speak. My name is David Hicks. I'm the president of Glen Rock Civic League. My address is for 6 Honaker Avenue in Norfolk, Virginia, has been so for approximately eight The primary concerns that the community has and want to convey to the Commission is that currently our way of life needs improvement, and that, of course, comes indirectly and directly through infrastructure improvements. We have 100-plus children in the neighborhood, that increases during the summer, who have no walkable recreational services nearby their home. The closest parks or recreational centers is up at Kim's Field, Fairline, and across the Boulevard Military Highway, which is not conducive for little kids to cross with their families, over near Poplar Hall Elementary. So they feel primarily that they would like to see the site developed to improve the sustainable ability of our community by giving us something that improves our way of life, which is a park for our animals, our pets, and our kids to play. They have no place to bike, or they play in the streets, in essence. You should have seen the PowerPoints that I've already forwarded to the Commission, as well as the city council, as well as the community has voted, with approximately well over 60% of the community voting, 99% are not in support of this project because... for those reasons. They would... If they have to be forced to support residential development, they will do so, but they would like to see a reduction of homes. Very early on, when I met with Mr. Feinman, I conveyed that their feelings, that they would like to see eight homes. He did come up and, you know, reduce it to nine, but the sentiments of the community is that they would rather not have homes developed at all, but to improve the way of life for the existing families that are there by giving us sustainable recreational activities like a park, playgrounds, things to that effect, where the children do not need to bike in the street or navigate treacherous narrow roads. Currently, subsequently, rather, there is a problem with parking. It's very hard for cars, when parked on either side of the street, to actually navigate. I personally witnessed EMS and our fire engine stationed for back down the street, because they could not make it down the street. Those are serious concerns that directly and indirectly impact this application. So I would like for you to seriously and strongly consider their feelings when making your recommendation to rather approve or disapprove of this application. Currently, the citizens are not behind it. They would rather see other improvements with these parcels done, and I am in talks and will reach out with Calvary to see what exactly can be done to improve our way of life. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Any comment from Commissioners? Questions of Mr. Hicks?
Have you contacted the city at all about locating a park within walking distance?
Yes, sir. Two years ago.
And how is that process going?
I was told that they could actually improve some of the paper streets, which are nearby. One is located on Brockwell, nearby this site, the other at the end of Wellman. They said they would take it under advisement, that's under Parks and Recs and the director there, and that they would try to improve it, but once again, that was two years ago, and nothing else has been said. Also forwarded emails stating that the community would like to see the city to acquire this property and use it for this purpose, because we have 10 city blocks, seven churches, and over 100 kids in the community, and they play in the street daily. And I'm just surprised that we haven't had any tragedies take place. But when it got to the point that city services that we really depend on, like EMS and the police department, and they have to back down the street because cars are parked, legally parked, but they cannot navigate them, then it becomes a problem. Really, the citizens who are here today can convey their sentiments about that.
It is a part of our Plan Norfolk 2030 to try to locate more parks within walking distance of neighborhoods. So, I mean, it's certainly a goal of this city to do those things. I would encourage you to contact your city councilman, see whether you can work out some sort of schedule when they can install a park somewhere within your neighborhood. I certainly encourage you to do that.
Yes. Yes, we have done that, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Any other comment from Commissioners?
I have a question. The discussion about the EMS and fire trucks and the difficulty getting up and down these streets, whether or not this development happens, that's still an issue. Is that correct?
Yes, it will be exacerbated by...
Okay. Okay, understood. Maybe there's parking issues.
Lenny?
All right. The motion is to recommend that the change of zoning be approved, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. Dr. Newman?
I appreciate work on both sides of this issue, but I vote yes.
Mr. Law?
I don't see how the development here is going to have any effect on creating parks and infrastructure for the community. I guess I'm at a loss as to that. It seems like there was some confusion initially as to whether or not it was nine lots, 10 lots, eight lots, but I think all in all, the residential aspect of it might be pretty good for the neighborhood. So I vote yes.
Ms. McQuillan?
I'd echo my fellow Commissioner's sentiments and vote yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye. I will make that recommendation to council. Thank you.
The next application before you, we turn now to the regular application agenda.
Mr. Chair? There were more people that had signed up to speak for that issue.
We don't have their applications here, Mrs. Cox. Next item, Lenny?
All right. Sorry. Tidewater Seafood, for a special exception, for the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption property located on the southwest corner of Tidewater Drive and Stanley Street. Property fronts 125 feet more or less along the western line of Tidewater Drive and 113 feet more or less along the southern line of Stanley Street. Premises numbered 7483 Tidewater Drive.
And I note that there is no opposition?
Ready for the motion, Mr. Chairman?
Indeed.
All right. The motion is to recommend that the special exception be approved, subject to conditions contained in the staff report. Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Aye.
Ms. McQuillan?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye. We'll make that recommendation to council. Thank you, Lenny.
All right. Item number one from the regular agenda is a city planning commission text amendment to the city's general plan to establish development criteria to encourage the transition of the Granby Monticello Corridor from industrial and automobile-related uses to a higher intensity of mixed-use development.
And we see that there is no one signed up and no opposition to this particular application?
All right. The motion is to recommend that the general plan text amendment be approved. Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Aye.
Ms. McQuillan?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye. Make that recommendation to council. Item two, Lenny?
Item number two is also by the city planning commission to amend the general plan in order to revise certain metrics and actions and to make typographic corrections.
And once again, no opposition?
The motion is to recommend that the general plan text amendment be approved. Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Aye.
Ms. McQuillan?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye. We'll make that recommendation to council.
All right. We're now moving to item number three on the regular agenda. This is by James Shepherd for the following applications on property located in the southeast corner of East Oceanview Avenue and 19th Bay Street. Property fronts 295 feet more or less along the southern line of East Oceanview Avenue and 150 feet more or less along the eastern line of 19th Bay Street. It also fronts 150 feet more or less along the western line of 20th Bay Street, premises numbered 3921 East Oceanview Avenue. Item number one is an amendment to the city's general plan, changing the land use category from commercial to residential mixed. Number two is a change of zoning from C2 to conditional R12.
Thank you, Lenny. We see here to speak in favor of this application, and Mr. James Shepherd?
All right. Before...
No opposition.
My name's James Shepherd. Address is 1703 Patty Lane. I was really just here to answer any questions, more than speak in behalf of it, if need be. I mean, we're trying to... We're trying to rezone it to single-family, proffer on single-family. The only reason we're going to multifamily is to cost point the price of the property to get an extra house out of the situation. I think there are 40-foot wide lots, I believe, and the two end ones are 45.
We should have done them.
So the houses that are on the design are actually going back to the architect, and we're talking to Ron Moore about changing the designs of the house. They're no longer going to be three-story houses. They're going to be two stories that are already approved by the city for narrow lots. They're all the city's design that we're going to go for on recommendation of the Civic League. So I think we met their criteria, and now we're just trying to get it all zoned by y'all. Appreciate your acceptance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you.
Also signed up to speak in favor of this application, Christina Minton?
This is the first time I've actually come before you all. I usually have somebody else show up on my behalf, but I'm actually the developer, Christina Minton. I'm located on 1206 Laskin Road, Suite 250, Virginia Beach, Virginia. And I have asked Greg Freck to come here with me so that he can explain the new, not site plans, but the new houses that are already Norfolk-accepted. And in his library, some of the plans are his and some are others for non-conforming lots. He has brought with him 10 handouts that would show you the site plans. The two-end sites are 46 by 150. The inner lots, which are five, are 40.6 by 150. And then following the site plan is the individual house and the house plans that we're asking, you know, the Civic League to accept and put on these lots.
Well, I think, Ms. Minton, that the design of those properties will be coordinated through the planning department, through Mr. Newcomb's office and Mr. Moore. Certainly, I'm sure we'll take a look at those as well.
Okay.
We appreciate that.
All right. Thank you.
Any comment from Commissioners? I know that there is no opposition to this particular application.
I'd just like to thank the developers for working with the Civic League out there in Oceanview.
Very good. The motion is to recommend that the general plan, land use map amendment and the change of zoning be approved.
With the conditions?
It's conditional, yes. Subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Aye.
Ms. McQuillan?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye, and we'll make that recommendation to council. Good luck with that. Next item, number four, Lenny?
Next item, number four, is Talbot Hall West LLC for the following applications on property generally bounded on the west and south by the Lafayette River and to the northwest by Crab Creek; to the east by Carolina Street; and to the north by properties of Carolina... Carolyn B. Talbot. Premises numbered 600 Talbot Hall Road. First, it's an amendment to the general plan, Plan Norfolk 2030, from institutional to single-family suburban. Second, it's a text amendment to add a planned development noted as Talbot Hall residential plan development. And third, it's to change the zoning from IN1 to the planned development Talbot Hall.
I think we have a presentation scheduled on this particular application.
Lenny? As you all note in the staff report and up on the map, the property is located at the western terminus of Talbot Hall Road, essentially at the intersection of Talbot Hall and Caroline Street. It's a seven-acre site. It is the remaining portion of the Talbot property. At one time, that encompassed a large portion of the city and dates back... The house that's on the property dates back to 1799. The property is currently owned by the Episcopal Diocese of Southern Virginia. They are proposing to sell this property to the applicant. The applicant is proposing to create 14 residential lots. One of those would contain the Talbot Hall house itself. They are proposing that the lots would be created by extending Talbot Hall Road, and then it would lie around to the south and north of the existing historic house. The property in itself is in a site plan review now. There's been delineations of the wetlands and of the required buffer from the wetlands. The road dynamics and metrics are all under review at this time. The Plan Norfolk indicates this area is institutional. The first application changes that essentially to single-family suburban. The second application creates a zoning district that allows the lots to be created and calls for the preservation of the residential structure. The zoning then is the last application, and that would essentially create the planned development Talbot Hall District. The staff has reviewed this from all levels, essentially the Plan Norfolk, text amendment, change of zoning, and recommend approval of those three elements of this application. Are there any questions?
You have any questions of Lenny, Commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lenny. Here to speak in favor of this particular application, Mr. Tim Trant?
Mr. Chairman, I'm Tim Trant, but I yield my time to Representative Talbot Hall West, Mr. DeShiel, who will give the opening presentation. I'll speak at the rebuttal period.
Thank you very kindly. He was next up anyway. Mr. DeShiel?
Are you going to advance this for me? Okay. All right. Well, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for letting me present this zoning application for Talbot Hall West LLC. I'll try to be brief and to the point. I'm a resident of Tal... I'm sorry. William DeShiel. Sorry about that. William DeShiel, 6919 Catherine Street, Norfolk, Virginia, 23505. I'm a resident of Talbot Hall. I've lived in Talbot Hall since 1995. I bought an overgrown, rundown, two-story colonial that was labeled "The Haunted House of the Neighborhood." We moved in just before Halloween in 1995, and we got zero trick-or-treaters that year. I would see the kids run by my house and yell "Haunted House," and then they'd continue to run to each house on either side of me. We renovated the house and raised our family in this neighborhood. Talbot Hall... Talbot Hall is a great neighborhood with a lot of friendly people. During the 20 years that we've lived in the neighborhood, my neighbors and I have been fortunate to be the beneficiaries of the diocese stewardship of Talbot Hall. The diocese has, at great expense, been a gracious caretaker of the property and the neighborhood has received tremendous tangible and intangible benefits from the ownership and management of Talbot Hall. As the property has aged and its relevance to the diocese' mission has evolved, understandably, the diocese has determined that it is no longer financially prudent for it to continue its stewardship of the property. Our families are the families we have banded together to create a proposal before you. We see it in part as repaying the diocese for the benefit we have received over the years. When Bishop Holly initially announced that they were going to sell the property to better serve their diocese, I understood what that meant. As time passed, I saw the concern of the neighborhood grow, the principal concern being what could and would ultimately fill the property. It is a large piece of property with many options that are available to developers. We heard credible reports that various developers were looking hard at the property for a 200-plus apartment unit complex, another developer, a high-density housing development to include over 40 homes, and other reports of possible conflicting institutional uses. Such potential usage would bring considerable traffic into the neighborhood and down Talbot Hall Road, as well as a whole slew of other potential negative impacts on the character and the quality of life that is representative of our neighborhood. While there was much discussion about public and private conservation efforts, as the diocese will tell you, no actual proposal was ever brought forth. Our idea was born out of our grave concern for the potential redevelopment and reuse scenarios that were emerging, and really took shape during the late summer of 2013. When I was walking near Talbot Hall and wrestling with what might become of this piece of property, I concluded that the most palatable reuse of the property would be for the extension of the existing neighborhood. It occurred to me that in this context, I might be able to, in a way that is financially feasible, resolve the concerns of my neighbors and I by, one, coming up with such a plan, two, be willing to relocate to the property, and, three, getting other friends and neighbors to similarly commit. Accordingly, I spent some time and drew up a possible plan for the site. The very first iteration laid out the lots around the manor house. From day one, the manor house was planned to be an important part of our new development. I threw the idea out to a few friends who responded favorably, and we were off and running. Within three weeks, we had 12 families financially committed, the LLC was formed, and we started discussions with the diocese. Just who is Talbot Hall West LLC? Talbot Hall West is at its core a cooperative, a group of families working together for the common interest. We're not real estate investors. We're investors in the future of the city of Norfolk. We are all, for various reasons, seeking new housing options and desire to stay in the city of Norfolk and remain a part of this community. All of the families are going to move in the neighborhood, and that was a requirement of being a member of the cooperative. Most of the families are downsizing as their kids, as our kids, graduate from high school and college. All of the families have been friends for many years, and most of us are lifelong residents of Norfolk. The members are Michael and Julie DeShiel, Lieutenant General Robert and Judy Blackman, Ricky and Blair Simpson, Steve and Robin Hall, Dave and Kathy Torzick, Jody and John Benedict, Jim and Carol Forrester, Judy and Billy DeShiel, Neil and Karen Crawford, Gatewood and Linda Shiel, Chris and Amy Cantor, Jim and Elizabeth Smith, Mike and Wendy Holly, and finally, Jim and Kathy Markey. The idea to extend the existing residential neighborhood into the area is not new, and I don't claim credit for that. The Civic League has discussed this possibility over the past 10 years. The consistent choice of the Civic League is if Talbot Hall is redeveloped, an extension of the residential neighborhood is the best use and approach for this property. The families involved visited and toured the property in August 213, and then we began discussions with the diocese in September of 2013. During these discussions, the diocese required that we share our development plans with their executive committee. During our meetings with the bishop and the executive committee, the committee stressed three important issues that needed to be addressed before they even considered our financial offer. First was the neighborhood. Our new development of the houses and families will fit in the existing neighborhood. We identified all the families that were involved. We provided the story of the families and of our group. We reinforced, all of our families are Norfolk families. Most of the families have lived in Norfolk for many years, and most of us grew up here in Norfolk. And finally, all of the families are planning to build and to move into the neighborhood of Talbot Park. We started laying out the property. We wanted the expansion to feel like an extension of the neighborhood, so we extended Talbot Hall Drive directly into the property, and we've selected the street names of Talbot Hall Court and Talbot Hall Crescent. We set the manor house as a central piece of property and followed the current drives around the manor house. We chose to make the property very low density and the lots larger than the surrounding neighborhood. The current zoning for the neighborhood is a mixture of R5, which is a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, and R6, a minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet. We sized our lots larger than the existing zoning. Our smallest lots are approximately 12,000 square feet. The average lots are over 15,000 square feet, and some lots total over 25,000 square feet. Next, the diocese requested that we recognize the history of the manor house structure. We recognize the history and the value of the manor house by using this historic structure as a center point and nucleus of our neighborhood extension. Presently, the manor house is well off the street. The structure is pushed back and not accessible to the public. In response to the concerns expressed to us by the community, we committed to formally evaluate the historic significance of the manor house and try to find a steward to acquire the house in recognition of its history. We figured we had four options. The city of Norfolk take over and run the house similar to the Myers House, sell to a legitimate historical foundation, find a buyer who would live in the house, or use the house as a clubhouse for our new residents. We met with representatives of the city of Norfolk on multiple occasions, and they expressed zero interest in undertaking this piece of property. We were informed that this year, where the Norfolk City budget is the tightest it's ever been in the history of the city, there are just no funds available. We thought about option two, and this would be the next best thing. We worked hard to identify a potential benefactor. We were very fortunate to find favor for the idea with Mr. Harvey Lindsey. The manor house now is presently under contract with Mr. Lindsey, and Mr. Lindsey has formed a foundation to purchase the manor house. The foundation will consist of one or two representatives of this new neighborhood extension and also a member of the Talbot Hall Civic League. The neighborhood will be very involved in the repairs, the fundraising, and the operation of the manor house. We understand that maintaining the structure has been an expensive and difficult task for the diocese over the past 70 years. The diocese has made improvements during this time, but these improvements mainly have been with the objective to keep the structure functional and dry, but not necessarily with the eye towards the historic preservation. We understood that we needed help in assessing the structure, and we hired Paige Pollard from the Commonwealth Preservation Group, which she is probably the leading preservation expert in eastern Virginia. Her firm is in the process of completing an assessment of the structure. Mrs. Pollard's initial assessment is that the exterior of the house is in a very altered and suspect condition. Modern finishes have been added that do not allow the structure to breathe, and these finishes have potentially trapped moisture that can cause further damage to the original exterior walls. She also comments that the house has been altered many times through history, and bringing it back to the original 1802 or 1799 structure will be astronomically expensive. She states that the house might be better off remaining as a representation of how it has evolved through time. Presently, Mr. Lindsey is waiting the formal assessment and recommendations of Ms. Pollard and exploring many options for the preservation of the manor house. The last requirement that the diocese asked us to address was our respect for the environment. And our group has great appreciation for the environment and wetlands. I have over 18 years, I served over 18 years on the Norfolk Wetlands Board. I served 11 years as the chairman. I've reviewed probably over 1,000 wetlands applications and sites over the past 18 years. This site is suffering from shoreline erosion and wetlands impacts, as you can see from the slide that I've posted. There are several beautiful live oaks that are currently threatened by shoreline erosion. The project is being designed to comply with modern stormwater requirements, stabilize the shoreline, restore impacted wetlands, and preserve the trees threatened by erosion. We respect the environment and have experience and knowledge to enhance the site. Our group has hired a marine wetlands professional engineer. We've delineated the limits of the wetlands. We've looked at areas to restore the wetlands, and we've met and walked the site with the city of Norfolk environmental staff on multiple occasions. We've reviewed preliminary plans to repair the 1,000 linear feet of shoreline on the west exposure to save the endangered trees along the shoreline, and we're proposing 900 linear feet of living shoreline to restore over 10,000 square feet of vegetated wetlands. These pictures here represent the denuded banks along the south exposure of the lot. We have met with the Elizabeth River Project and have reviewed our plans. Our two groups want to partner on this project and make it a model development that will coexist in harmony with the neighborhood and the surrounding ecosystem. In summary, it's a great project for the diocese and our cooperative, but more importantly for you, it's a great project for the city of Norfolk, for the neighborhood of Talbot Park, and the continued success in the revitalization of Ward's Corner. Thank you all for your time, and we greatly appreciate your recommendation of approval of this project. And now I stand by to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. DeShiel. Any question, Mr. DeShiel? Thank you.
Have you met with the Talbot Hall Foundation?
No, we have not. We have not, we have provided a... We have met with the Civic League, and they were present at the Civic League for our presentation. And we have done pretty extensive community outreach, you know, through our communication and dialogue with the Civic League through the entire process. We did introduce the Civic League president to Bishop Holly, and the president of Civic League met and they discussed the projects. Again, we met with all the formal stakeholders at the Civic League meeting in March of 2014, and both supporters and opponents were at that meeting where we gave a full presentation. We listened to their concerns, and most of their concerns are addressed in our original submission and our original intentions of the project.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. DeShiel.
Thank you.
Here to speak in favor, Mr. Jim McDonald?
Good afternoon. My name is Jim McDonald. I live at 218 Sinclair Street in Norfolk, in Talbot Park, and I am the Civic League president. I just wanted to share a couple of comments and some observations that have taken place over the past two years. And before I do that, I do want to pass out a couple of items, if I can. As Mr. DeShiel indicated earlier, this rezoning issue and opportunity has been alive and well since I moved to the neighborhood, which was in 1990. The first letter you'll get was from my predecessor, Mr. Tim Smith. He was the president of Talbot Park Civic League. When this letter was generated and presented to the planning commission in support of a rezoning change to residential from institutional. The fear of Talbot Hall being sold has been alive and well for a very long time. And part of the concern and fear has been the fact that a developer with institutional zoning and capital could come in and pretty much put almost anything, as long as it fell within the guidelines of institutional zoning. High-density professional office complex, medical-type facilities, et cetera, retirement community. So those have been the concerns over the years, and they've become much more transparent since the diocese decided to put the property up for sale. The second letter that's coming around are the notes from our meeting in February. And I wanted to share that with you because I invited Mr. Thomas to attend that meeting. Talbot Hall has been on our agenda off and on for well over a year. It's also been included in the Ward's Corner Task Force agenda for the past year as well. In the very beginning, I would just please understand that the ultimate goal was to try to preserve the property as it is today. I met with Paul Frame, I met with Barclay Wynn, and several others, anybody I could think of, executives from Norfolk Southern, to try to figure out a way to preserve this piece of property. Even Karen Scherberger from Fest Events, I thought she would be a good contact. Unfortunately, it appeared early on that there was no appetite for this type of property, whether it's an old manor house that hadn't been available to the public for years, or it just wasn't suitable for, you know, for whatever the reasons. We weren't unable, we were unable to find a solution along those lines. One afternoon, I got a call from Billy DeShiel, and he said, "Jim, I'd like to talk to you." I said, "Sure." So we met, and he said, "This is what I'm thinking." And at that time, he shared his plans, nothing in writing, just kind of discussing it back and forth, of a 14-unit or 14-lot real estate development. And I would ask for more time because this is a pretty, if I could wrap it up in one minute, I would appreciate that, Mr. Chair.
Let's shoot for one minute.
Okay, yes, sir. So at first, I thought he was kidding because this was an opportunity that we had long awaited. Not a high-density, multi-family development, as he mentioned, 40-plus units, nothing like what we have in Lafayette Shores, although that's a great community. Most of those houses are separated by less than two yards. Each home would sit, on average, about one-half an acre. At our most recent meeting, we did take a vote after Mr. DeShiel presented his plans. We had almost, I think, every one of the 14 families that are looking to move in and invest in our neighborhood present. We did take a vote. It was 27 to 7 in favor of the rezoning change. I will note that some called the vote invalid for various reasons, and, you know, that's unfortunate. I did meet with the bishop, and I did meet with the bishop and Mr. DeShiel at the property, and I think the bishop did everything he possibly could without compromising the sale price to keep the integrity of that property in place as best he could.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much. I hope you guys will consider the zoning change to residential. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, in favor of this application, Brad Clavin?
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. My name is Brad Clavin. I'm a resident of the city of Norfolk. I'm also a resident of Talbot Park. I reside at 502 Talbot Hall Road. I'm also a Talbot Park Civic League president, a former Talbot Park Civic League president. And I'm, as you noted, I'm speaking in support of the Talbot Hall West LLC. If you're not familiar with the location of my home, the location of my home, I'm right on Talbot Hall Road. I'm within a block of the property. And as we pointed out several times here, the question of this property was just addressed recently at the Civic League meeting. And as Jim just pointed out also, and I And as Jim just pointed out also, and I was gonna, I thought about this, is, thought about what I wanted to talk about today, that this was addressed ten years ago, this subject of rezoning, ten years ago, by the Civic League. In fact, I have a copy of the letter, and y'all may have a copy of this. It's presented, was presented to the Planning Commission, Planning Office, City Council, and the City Manager, July 22nd of 2004. Is that what y'all have?
We do have.
Yeah. So, that letter was generated from a meeting that we had on June 16th, 2004. And again, if you look at the, there's a third bullet point, and I'm just gonna read that, which is, "We ask in the event of a sale or change of ownership of any properties currently occupying IN-1 zone lots within Talbot Park, if a zoning change is requested, that only R5, R6, R7 zones be considered, and that no zone densities greater than R7 be granted within Talbot Park." So, you know, again, you could see that we've got a paper trail of our Civic League being for a residential project, residential development such as this. And this proposal today really embodies what was desired ten years ago. It's a quality development for extremely nice, single-family homes. We also, there's also an establishment of this foundation with a real monetary commitment to preserve the manor house. You know, as it stands now, with the, that IN-1 zoning, my understanding, again, that we could be looking at three hundred units, three hundred housing units potentially. And I can tell you, living on Talbot Hall Road, the, the infrastructure of the road, the utilities will not support that kind of development. We have really a, we have a tremendous gift that the, the group, the fourteen families in the LLC have given us, by agreeing to, to buy and live in this, in this development. And I don't think we could have asked for a better plan. So I, I think, and one other thing I would, I'd like to say, that I think we should look at this plan and try to duplicate it in other areas of the city where there's truly questionable developments. I encourage you to agree with me that a change in zoning is for the betterment of the neighborhood and the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clavin. Next to speak in favor of this application, Tyler Linebuck.
I'm not a Civic League President or the past Civic League President, so I'll keep it short. I'm here today to support the development of the Talbot Hall property into fourteen single-
Linebuck, if you give us your name and-
Tyler Linebuck, 523 Oak Grove Road, Norfolk, Virginia, 23505. I'm here today to support the development of the Talbot Hall property into fourteen single-family homes. My support for the project comes from three different perspectives: that of a neighbor, that of a licensed real estate broker, and that of a Norfolk citizen. We've lived in Talbot Park for almost twelve years, and during that time, we've enjoyed the green space and the vista of the property that we enjoy from our home, which overlooks the northwest portion of Talbot Hall. I've walked our dogs there almost every day, as many other neighbors have. And while it technically has been private property, it has been community space that many have used for similar purposes. In an ideal world, this property would remain green space, but as we all know, we don't live in an ideal world. And the only constant life is change. If the property is to be developed, single-family homes is the most appropriate development project. That brings me to my perspective from a real estate standpoint. As a licensed real estate broker, I'm familiar with the concepts of conformity with the existing neighborhood and highest and best use of a piece of property. And certainly, this development project hits all the right buttons on those concepts. Single-family development conforms most closely to the existing Talbot Park neighborhood and is the highest and best usage of this property versus other potential uses, such as a homeless shelter or apartments or condominiums, which have been other suggested uses for the property. These uses would increase traffic and have a detrimental impact upon the neighborhood. In fact, I think this single-family development, along with the shopping center improvements at Ward's Corner, have the potential to raise the value of all neighborhood properties, such, much as the rising tide raises all ships. Finally, from the perspective of a Norfolk citizen, I'm aware that the current nonprofit ownership of the property pays no property taxes to the city, and that development of the property into private homes will increase the city's annual tax revenues by approximately $140,000 a year, or more by my own estimation. In a city where much property is owned by the federal government, which pays no property taxes to the city, this certainly would have a benefit to all Norfolk citizens in terms of an increased tax base. Therefore, in summary, I support the development of Talbot Hall into fourteen single-family homes for all the reasons I've stated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Linebuck. Next in favor of this application, Patrick Yaki.
Members, my name is Patrick Yaki. My address is 214 Carly Way. I'm a native of Norfolk, born and raised here. I've lived in Talbot Park going on close to fifteen years. I must admit, I'm envious that I was not on the list of names that Mr. DeShiel mentioned as moving into the new Talbot Park development. It's a relief to see a development like this going in that is of low density, not high density. I understand the concern that we are potentially losing some of the historical attributes of this project. However, I think the project contains a lot of thought and effort to keep that history alive, and I'm here to voice my support for the DeShiels and the rest of the members of that community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next in favor of this application, Virginia D. Stanislaw.
I reside at 1570 Brandon Avenue in Petersburg, Virginia. Mr. Chairman, lady, gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to come before you today. Together with the Reverend Edmund Pickup and co-chairs, we are co-chairs of the Property Committee. We're appointed by the bishop and the executive board of our diocese. The Diocese of Southern Virginia supports the rezoning of the property currently owned by us, located at 600 Talbot Hall Road. It's under contract with the Talbot Hall West LLC. The letter that was sent to you on our behalf by our Chancellor, Sam Webster, completely states our position on the matter. Our diocese came into the stewardship of the Talbot Hall property through the remarkable generosity of the Talbot family, beginning in the mid-1950s. We have attempted to care for this property to the best of our ability. However, in recent years, I admit that we have fallen short. The diocese does not have the funds to divert from the mission and ministry of the Church in order to maintain the Talbot Hall historic house in the way that it should be maintained and restored. The proposed rezoning plan is indeed the best way to save the historic house from the benign neglect that it has experienced at our hands. The diocese decided to sell the property, and it was not an easy decision, and it involved much discernment. After much hand-wringing and discussion, including two open town hall meetings held at the Church of the Ascension, by resolution dated February 16th, 2012, the diocese, acting through its annual council, approved exploring the possible sale of the Talbot Hall property. The requirements, as Mr. DeShiel told you, to determine to be essential for the sale: consideration of the historic nature of the Talbot Hall manor house, preservation of the property shoreline, and a use compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. There was much interest in the property, some of which not have required a zoning change, but we did not feel that it was in keeping with our resolution to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. An example of this was for a battered women's shelter that you may have read about in the Virginian Pilot. Because of this, for the general welfare of the neighborhood, the public necessity for change, and the need for good zoning practice, a rezoning is absolutely necessary. Fortunately for us, one and only one entity stepped forward with an adequate purchase price and a willingness to meet all of the requirements of our resolution, and that is the Talbot Hall West LLC. Both private parties have now entered into a contract for the sale of the property. They address to all of our concerns. First and foremost, the development provides for the preservation of the manor house, which is much in need. May I have a moment more?
You have a minute.
Thank you. It addresses the wetlands. It is compatible with the neighborhood, as you have heard, for low density. And it's going to be in a good relationship and working with the LLC, that we feel that they will be the good stewards of the property that is needed. Only because of this were we able to present to our bishop, the executive board, and the standing committee our recommendation. Your prompt decision is needed, so the diocese may relocate our office, enter into lease negotiations. We need to proceed with the mission and ministry of the Church and what has become somewhat stifled through this process. The funds we use not to meet budgetary needs, but rather for providing new office space to replace the space that we will be leaving, planting new churches, renovating and expansion of our conference center, develop ministries, and more. As you know, we're not in the business of parks and recreation, nor are we in the business of preserving and rehabilitating historic homes. Our mission is to spread the good news, to build faith for both adults and children needed to move forward.
Thank you very kindly. Next in favor of this application, Kenneth Paulson. Mr. Paulson's not responding. Next up, Richard L. H. Joyner.
My name is Richard Joyner, and I live at 206 Sinclair Street. That is in Talbot Park. I'm not going to take a lot of your time because you've already heard all the positives that this develop, or this rezoning will take place. I will not repeat them. I support them. I would like to say that I have met with a number of my neighbors in casual conversations and to give credence to the fact that most people support the new rezoning. Most of them do say they're very jealous, and if they had had the opportunity or the offer, they too would have loved to been in on this development plan. And I think it's too late because then we'd go into multifamily homes and things like that. So, I would like to give my support to this plan very much, and also recommend that if you haven't been down to Talbot Hall, go see it. It's a beautiful spot, especially at sunset, and you might see some eagles. Thank you.
Sir, let me ask you a question. How long have you lived in that neighborhood?
I've lived in that neighborhood since 1985. However, I grew up across Grammy Street and Cromwell Farms. I trespassed many times in that area, along with all my friends that lived in Talbot Park and in the Cromwell Farm area. And it was a pleasure to have that, and the church was so nice to not have us all arrested. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyner. Next up in favor of this application, Neil Crawford.
My name is Neil Crawford. My wife Karen and I reside at 1401 Old Brandon Avenue in West Ghent. We are one of the fourteen families that are part of the Talbot Hall West LLC. We ask for your support for this project. We think it is well-planned, and it is good for Norfolk, good for Talbot Park, good for the Civic League, good for the manor house, and good for the fourteen families. We think this plan represents a tremendous compromise that addresses the majority of the concerns raised about the reuse and development of Talbot Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. David O'Sowney? O'Shevy? Excuse me, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is David O'Shevy. I'm 228 Talbot Hall Road, 23505. I'm also a volunteer block captain for the Talbot Park Civic League. And in the recent days, I've touched base with all of my neighbors on this project. And there are sixteen households on the 200 block of Talbot Hall Road. We have a vested interest in what happens at the end of the street because it's the primary way in and out of the neighborhood there. And of the sixteen residents, eleven are for the rezoning. I had no contact with two. Two are renters with little or no interest in the outcome, and one house is empty and up for sale. And none of the eleven are paid active members of the Talbot Park Civic League. And they wanted me to express that we support the rezoning effort for the single-family homes. Some reasons given were increase in tax base, increase in property values, less impact of the infrastructure, utilities, and schools, less traffic, and the manor house is preserved. And what we don't want is, we don't want high-density housing at the end of the street, whether it's condominiums or apartments, or an institution that's incompatible with the neighborhood with an increase in traffic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. In favor of this application to speak is Ms. Edna Riddick. No, Ms. Riddick. Benjamin Boblick?
Ben, he's with the other one. It's four. Ben, we can ask a question.
George Grenon?
I'm George Grenon. I live at 508 Brackenridge Avenue in Talbot Park, 23505. All right. My name is George Grenon, and I live at 508 Brackenridge Avenue in Talbot Park and have lived in Norfolk since 1969. I've also lived in the West Ghent, Lockhaven, and Larchmont sections of Norfolk. I am here to totally support Talbot Hall West LLC. I have personally known many of the Talbot Hall West LLC families for more than thirty-five years. In fact, one of the families, Ricky and Blair Simpson, are godparents to my oldest daughter. This entire group of families are truly wonderful people. I consider the Talbot Hall West LLC plan, along with a generous gift from Harvey Lindsay, that will go towards preservation, preserving, excuse me, preserving the manor house, an incredible gift to the Talbot Hall neighborhood. Personally, and I can speak for my wife as well, I couldn't think of a nicer group of people that I would rather have as my neighbors than the families of Talbot Hall West LLC. This is absolutely a win-win situation with the gift of the manor house preservation, the building of quality, first-class homes, and the beautiful people who are Norfolk citizens and care deeply about the city of Norfolk. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Joseph and Sharon Cincy.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My wife Sharon and I are here. We're from 6811 Caroline Street, Norfolk, Virginia, 23505, and our property is ninety feet from Talbot Hall. The current, the current property usage for wedding receptions, parties, is quite noisy. In fact, most evenings in the summer, on the weekends, we can't hear ourselves talk outside. The property manor house and outlying buildings are in disrepair. The manor house is currently not available to the public. So as a direct backyard neighbor to the property, I'm very much in favor of this project and against any institutional or facility that might be created. Some would like to suggest the property is a park. Right now, it's not a park, but rather unsupervised private property. The no trespassing signs are ignored, and no one seems to be living on the property. The number of unsupervised activities that occur on this property and its current caretaker status alarms me. Just last evening, four young males and a young female were on the Northern Point, sitting under the no trespassing sign where the light's been out for more than a year, with a cloud of smoke over their head. So I, for one, as a neighbor, would very much like to see an organized, single-family, fourteen, single-family homes with that type usage. I have visited the Save Talbot Hall website. It is very interesting. As soon as you log on, you become a friend, and obviously, I did not want to do that, but I am considered that way because of the way the website is, is set up. In conclusion, I think this is a great project. I think it would be good to get more tax dollars for the city, and as a direct neighbor, I totally support it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think we've heard from ten speakers in addition to the applicant in favor of this application. There are a few others, but we have a total here of some sixty folks who've signed up in favor of this. We could go through here in a repetition of the same thing, all six of these- We could go through here in a repetition of the same thing, all six of these potentially. But let me ask those who are in favor, who have not spoken in favor of this application, would you please stand so that we could at least recognize you? If you feel compelled, we will certainly make an opportunity for you to speak. Otherwise, we thank you. Here and against this application is Mr. Louis J. Taylor.
Chairman Fraley and Commissioners, good afternoon. I'm Jay Taylor. I live at 516 Oak Grove Road, Norfolk, Virginia, 23505, in the Talbot Park neighborhood where I have lived and been raised in one way or another since my birth, or almost since my birth. My grandfather and grandmother built their house there in 1929. Indeed, it was the first house built out of the Talbot Hall, what became Talbot Park. I understand about building houses. I understand about private ownership, and I come to you with full awareness of the need to balance public and private interests in a situation like this. There are very important public and private interests here. The Talbot Hall Foundation, of which I'm the chair, was formed over two years ago to work for the preservation of Talbot Hall. The proposed plan for this property, as it's been presented here today, has much to recommend it. The plan for shoreline restoration is very promising with Elizabeth River Project support. However, the Talbot Hall Foundation must oppose the rezoning request. The development plan for which this rezoning is requested would put 14 houses and two streets on what was the yard of a 210-year-old plantation house. But most important, it would separate the Manor House from the Lafayette River. This would most certainly jeopardize its preservation because it would damage and likely destroy its historic significance. This has been confirmed to us by senior staff of the Virginia Department of Historic Resources and other experts in historic preservation. Thus, the plan and the rezoning, for this reason, is not in the best interest of the city. Talbot Hall can retain its historic significance only by retaining its visual and physical connection to the river. We believe that this goal can be achieved with a practical approach to balancing public and private interests. Carol Talbot, who gave the property originally to the diocese, has signed a letter of intent, which you have in the packet that our foundation has provided to you. A letter of intent offering to make her property available in one way or another for sale to an entity that could work with the LLC or to the LLC to balance what the LLC would be giving up in order to carve out a yard between the house and the river. The lot that Carol Talbot owns is .57 acres, and that's roughly the amount of land that would need to be added to the plan to extend a yard from the house to the river. It would involve some adjustment, no doubt, to the plan, but the adjustment would be small. If I may have one more minute?
Yes, sir, you may. Right ahead.
Thank you. It would involve shifting the location of the houses sufficiently to the left and right in front of the house, between the house and the river, to allow for that viewscape and that physical connection. It's generally acknowledged that Talbot Hall is historically significant, and others are going to speak to this more knowledgeably than I can. I would just want to share one thing with you that was shared with me recently. This is a coin that was found on the Talbot Hall grounds just recently by a neighbor, and this coin is dated 1797. This coin has marked on it George III Britannia. It's very likely this coin fell from the pocket of Thomas Talbot, the first owner of Talbot Hall. This is a palpable connection to the history of this place, and it's an example, I suppose. I know the historical significance of this place is a real reason to do this kind of preservation. Unlike other major cities, Norfolk hasn't saved much of its historic architecture. If preserved, Talbot Hall can tell the human story of Norfolk. Just one final point. Rezoning should not be granted, as you know, simply because an application is complete, technically correct, or even has a lot of favorable aspects like this one does. You're empowered to determine whether this rezoning is in balance in the public interest or satisfactorily in the public interest. I ask you to recommend denying this rezoning for that purpose, but I would also say that the Talbot Hall Foundation has always been and continues to be desirous of working with the developer and with the city to come up with a plan that would satisfy these interests that we're going to be presenting to you today. Thank you very much.
Mr. Taylor, I want you to feel that you've been not allowed adequate time. We gave the proponents a little bit longer, and though you're not an applicant, we'd like to give you the opportunity to extend your remarks a little bit so that you can say that we were at least fair in the shared of the time. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Chairman Fraley, that is very kind of you. I would just say one thing, and others will be speaking to other points. What we have here is an opportunity to educate the succeeding generations in Norfolk about Norfolk history. Norfolk once was a little town of 1,000 people when Talbot Hall was built. It gradually expanded, consuming the grounds, the lands of Talbot Hall and the Talbot family. What we want is for visitors to this house in the future, which is thankfully going to be preserved, we hope, by the LLC, to understand when they visit that this was a plantation house. It's not a townhouse. There has to be a connection to the river. There has to be a viewscape and a physical connection for the visitor to the river. That's a fundamental point. I think that is our fundamental point that we need to make, and the reason why we think that this rezoning application needs to be denied. I would be happy to take any questions from anybody.
Have you had that coin you found appraised?
No. It was actually fairly recently found and by a neighbor, and it's certainly going to be taken over to the Christy Museum for a good inspection, but I'm pretty sure it's the real thing. Want me to bite it?
Thank you, sir. Any questions of the?
Mr. Taylor, I certainly appreciate the foundation's interest in that property. Did the foundation make any offer on that property? Did they have the wherewithal to take over that property and do what they'd like to see happen?
The foundation made a good-faith effort to try to raise funds to purchase that property. We hired a consultant. We spent our own money to pay the fees for that consultant, and we unfortunately found that we could not find a lead donor to bring the community on board to raise that kind of money, $4 million, to purchase Talbot Hall. In the late stages of this process, just before the property came under contract with the Talbot Hall West LLC, we had a plan forming, and a real solid plan. And I'm not going to try to go into detail with it now because it's been put on the table, and I wouldn't want to bring the parties who were involved with that to public attention until it's necessary. But we did have a solid plan that would have resulted in essentially a public-private partnership that would have preserved the entire property. I'm sorry we didn't get a chance to do that. After we learned the property had gone under contract, then we made every effort to contact the Talbot Hall West LLC in order to have a discussion so that they could understand what our primary issues were and so that we could try to work together to iron these things out. I believe the LLC, I'm speaking for myself here, has indeed done a lot to make us feel more comfortable about Talbot Hall Manor House. However, I understand that there's not been any effort made, and in fact, a request has been made and denied, to put the Manor House under a conservation easement. Unless the house and the yard that we seek is put under a conservation easement, we can't have any real certainty, real confidence, that it will actually ultimately be preserved. You're going to hear a couple speakers later talking about what happens to houses when they are cut off from their natural context. I've gone much farther than what you wanted, Dr. Newman, and I apologize. Any other questions?
I have a question. You mentioned the conservation easement. Who would hold that conservation easement? Because the city of Norfolk cannot, as I understand it, and it's not the size of property that the DHR would typically hold.
Right. There are, I can't name the organization or organizations. I do know there are organizations that would look favorably on this property for this purpose. Again, it's not just an environmental issue, it's a historic issue. And I'm quite confident that someone could be found to hold that.
But they haven't been identified?
We've not, no, we've not identified one. One is not standing in the wings. However, as part of that plan that we had developing in the 11th hour, one of the people, one of the groups that were working with us on that, actually, the Trust for Public Lands, was making it pretty clear that something like that could indeed be worked out. That's a national preservation organization.
I wanted to tell you, I've read through your entire proposal and the appendices, and I appreciate all the effort that you've taken on that. I live in a historic district. I've restored our house. I will tell you, it went into seven figures. It is a very costly endeavor. I am also concerned about this house, the drive it that's been applied, the vinyl windows that are currently, that's what I understand, to the Manor House, unfortunately. So the restoration is going to be extraordinarily expensive. I don't know if it has enough historic value and context to be listed in the registry, and I wonder if you all have taken that into consideration?
Oh, absolutely. And first of all, in 1994, the Norfolk Planning Department and the Virginia Department of Historic Resources conducted a survey, actually, a survey of historic architecture in Norfolk. And as a result of that, a survey was done of Talbot Hall by the Department of Historic Resources, which found the house eligible for listing in the National Register. Now, the changes that you speak of go, I believe, all of them before 1994. Certainly, the, did you mention something about?
The eaves, the drive it that's been applied on?
That was done about 80 years ago. That is part of the historic aspect of the, or historic characteristic of the house. Yeah, you know, the brick for that house was fired on the property. The clay was dug from the property. I'm told there's a depression still on the property where it came from. And I'm sure African slaves made the bricks that built the house. Now, let me just finish. So the clay, unfortunately, was a little soft, and so there was erosion that developed over the first 100 years. And a long, long time ago, the family did the stucco over the bricks. That was there when the Department of Historic Resources did their survey.
I hope that is the case. I had inquired specifically about that.
That is the case, indeed.
I was told that it was drive it or eaves that the church applied in the mid to late 90s, so I'm mistaken, apparently.
They may have patched something, but the stucco, I've read articles 80 years old in newspapers and magazines that mention that.
So let me just be clear. You are happy with the developers' maintenance of the Manor House, and you're not necessarily against the single-family development of the site. You want to maintain a viewscape from the front porch of the Manor House to the river.
If I may qualify my answer just a little bit. We are pleased that the LLC wants to preserve and restore the Manor House. That is terrific. We feel that doing that without placing a historic conservation easement on it would not be sufficient because who knows what happens next? Then the viewscape down out to the river, we would ask that that not just be a viewscape, but that the visitor to the house, 20 years from now, 50 years from now, long after the current residents would be gone, would be able to go out there, walk to the rivershore, and feel what this place was was. We think that with taking that away just so severely diminishes the historic value, preservation value of the house, that to not ensure that that happens would be foolish, and we'd all be embarrassed 20 years from now when our children ask us, what were you thinking?
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Taylor, Commissioners?
Jay, can you speak to the alternatives that the church mentioned earlier? If this group were not able to purchase this property, we're looking at apartments, we're looking at battered women's shelter. I mean, how is that advantageous and how is that protecting the house? I mean, none of those options, the real options that exist, don't do anything that you're asking for.
Sure. Again, so we're not taking exception to the residential development, per se. We can't support this rezoning request because of the problems with the historical authenticity. So I just think that's a point that we've moved beyond.
How do you propose that? I mean, the swath of land that you're suggesting should be preserved appears to be two lots on the proposed plat.
No, it wouldn't be two lots. You know, there are, I think you all have visited the place, and I hope you stood on the back porch and looked out to the river, and you may have noticed two diagonal lines of trees reaching out toward the shore. Those tree lines were planted by the great-grandfather of Carol Talbot. I'm telling you, I know, but this is the dimension I'm talking about. That tree line encompasses a space of about a half acre or .6 acres in front of the house. That's the part that we would offset with Carol Talbot's land.
Those two lots, then? You can approach.
It would re-
That's one or two lots? That's the question.
Mr. Thomas, it does involve two lots, and that's true. And so there would have to be an adjustment using Carol Talbot's lot as a trade-off. But I would also say that we're not asking to take control of this property. This property remains private. The LLC, by putting a conservation easement on that yard and that house, don't lose control of the house or the yard. Indeed, that yard space is still enjoyable by the families that are living on either side of it.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Fraley. I appreciate the time.
And against this application, Danielle Crewer?
Good afternoon, members of the commission. My name is Danielle Crewer. My mailing address is 740 Duke Street, Suite 120. I'm with the law firm of Venkuren Warman, and we are counsel for the Talbot Hall Foundation. I, Lead Counsel Dan Warman could not be here today, so I'm covering his comments as well as my own. I hope that you will be patient with me in doing that. As you've heard from Mr. Taylor, the protection of the historic resource that we have here in Talbot Hall is lacking in this particular application. Although it may be the lesser of other evils, we feel that it could be improved, and as it is proposed, it shouldn't be recommended for approval at this time. The Talbot Hall Foundation would love the opportunity to meet and discuss its options, and as Mr. DeShiel said, it hasn't really been given any time to meet with the LLC or talk about the proposal to sell Carol Talbot's property. We just think that it's a little premature at this time to recommend it for approval. One of the reasons for this is because the laws in Virginia are very deferential to historic protection. We have the Virginia Constitution that makes the goals of historic preservation a policy of the Commonwealth. We have the Virginia Code, which makes one of the purposes of a zoning ordinance to protect historic resources. We have the city of Norfolk's zoning ordinance, one of the purposes of which is protection of historic resources as well as the environment. Specifically, we have to refer to the general plan of Norfolk as required by the zoning ordinance when considering an amendment to the zoning ordinance. The general plan is replete with an entire chapter on historic preservation as well as environmental issues. And when we consider this application and compare it to the general plan, we just see that it is lacking in a few areas. For example, increasing the number of historic resources that the city enjoys. There's no meaningful zoning protection for the Manor House here. There's one line of text that says it will be preserved, but preserved isn't defined in any way. Foreseeably, it could be modified in a way that doesn't preserve the historic resource. And although we do appreciate everything that Mr. DeShiel's has offered, there's no guarantee in the current zoning amendment that that will be honored. And in addition, the general plan favors new and infill development that respects the surrounding historic properties, and this fails to respect that context, that significance of the connection with the river. And so it could be improved in that respect. And so it could be improved in that respect. Notably, the LLC hasn't applied for local historic landmark designation, which is something that the general plan promotes. If I could have one additional minute?
Have one additional minute, Ms. Cruer.
Thank you. Something that the general plan promotes and the zoning ordinance recently provided for, but that has not been applied for, that would be a visible commitment to preserving the historic value of the property. And finally, on an environmental level, we definitely appreciate the shoreline protection proposal. But again, it's not written in stone. It's somewhat new information to us. And because this is Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area property, I would submit to the commission that the zoning ordinance actually requires site plan approval prior to the submission of this application. And that would be pursuant to Section 278m for Chesapeake Bay Preservation Areas. And we haven't had the site plan approval process. And so that is another measure that would ensure that the environmental protection aspects are respected. So we would just propose that more time is offered for the foundation to be involved a little more in this process and to come to a
Ms. Cruer?
Thank you.
Adam, can you add anything to any of those legal points that have been brought up? Is there anything else you can help us, help educate us on? Is there anything that we're not fully understanding?
I don't think at this point there have been any misstatements of the law. I'm going to double-check the citation that Ms. Cruer offered for the site plan section to see if there is there. But do you have a specific question that I can answer?
I think Dr. Newman is referring to the fact that we heard references to a lot of articles and legal precedents. We wondered whether or not we were missing out on the benefit of what those particular articles might be.
I didn't hear anything misstated. So with regard to the concept of a conservation easement, I think Commissioner McClellan's correct. I think there needs to be a beneficiary or a holder of that easement. That's the entity that would be empowered to enforce it. With regard to preservation in Virginia, of course, the general plan and the state do promote those goals. There are limited tools that localities have been granted to designate historic buildings and historic districts, and there's processes for doing that. So unless you, unless you comply with the state rules for designating property to be historic, then localities don't have the power to restrict their alteration or improvement or maintenance or those types of things. So as was alluded to, Norfolk does have a application process for historic designation. But the owner of the property needs to commence that or consent to the planning commission's commencing it. So I don't know if the church is interested in doing it at this time. But we do hear, I think that the LLC was interested in reservation. So until the, until the facts about what can be restored and what the cost of that is have been worked out, it's kind of hard to say whether that designation's available. So, you know, there's a lot of issues here, and I will check on the site plan question as well.
This is not a historic property now?
That is correct.
Thank you, Adam. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. McClellan.
Sorry, one more question. That Norfolk historical designation, that's fairly new, is that not?
It is. And so far, we have not had any applications for the specific building or landmark designation.
Right, okay. How long does that process typically take, do we know?
The process is essentially a rezoning. So it requires an application, it requires a determination by staff to ensure its completeness. And then it needs to come to the planning commission for a public hearing, counsel for a public hearing. So it's a number of months.
Thank you, Adam. Next up, against this application, Amy Waters Yosinski?
Chairman Fraley and Commissioners, my name is Amy Waters Yosinski, and I reside actually at 4305 Gosnold Avenue in the Colonial Place neighborhood, where I've lived for 22 years. And I'm a Norfolk native. Had a brief residency in Great Bridge growing up. Came back to Norfolk after grad school at the University of Virginia, where I get my master's in urban environmental planning and with an emphasis in historic preservation. I've been around the block a long time in Norfolk. Speaking today more or less as a citizen of Norfolk on this issue. And as having been a Historical Society president here in Norfolk years ago. I've seen a lot of things change here. I've seen a lot of certain resources lost. I would raise the issue with you today. A couple of you have experience in Virginia Beach and probably have restored homes yourselves. I'm going to list off real quickly here in my three minutes some properties that may ring familiar with most of the people in this room. And they're not in Norfolk. Will Snare Plantation, Old Comfort, The Hermitage, Adam Keeling House, Pembroke Manor, Green Hill, Thomas Murray House, Richard Murray House, Briarwood, Webblen House, which actually has one of those protective easements on it. And what do they all have in common? You might ask, and why am I bringing them up now? They're all in private ownership. They're all part of developments, neighborhoods in Virginia Beach. But in this particular case, they all retain their frontage to a body of water, which changed their historic significance. They are all listed in some way on the Virginia Register or the National Register of Historic Places. Now, you get back to Norfolk, and what do we have with the similar nature of Talbot Hall and what we have to offer of Talbot Hall? The only thing I can really tell you is, is that under private ownership and a development, we heard about an earlier neighborhood today. We heard about Poplar Hall in the earlier segments today. Poplar Hall is under private ownership, has its, has its, has its frontage to the water. It was a plantation house, early home in Norfolk. Retains that stewardship that the family's had for many years with the house and private ownership had with the house. But we're going to lose Talbot Hall's significance. Whether it has a chance to be on the Historic Register or not, you may be able to be the ones who decide whether it is or it isn't by what you do here today. You know, I, I think that we have, in Norfolk over the years, and what I saw as Historical Society president and the McCrady Center projects and other projects I worked, saw a lot of things go by the wayside and a lot of things that we can't get back. But I believe in practical preservation, and I think what the Talbot Hall Foundation is trying to do is to come up with a very good compromise here. And to have the best of both things that we have with the house and with the project that they've come up with, the LLC. You know, it's, let me leave you with something else to think about here, too. You know, you brought up the issue of what qualities the drive-it or the windows. Can I have an extra minute?
Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
What you have here is an opportunity for further stewardship of the house. Make it something that's contributing to the development. Make it a unique property. Bring people to it, educate them. Do what we failed to do in so many other cases in the city of Norfolk, which also, by the way, ranks as number two in the state of Virginia for the worst in getting rid of its historic resources. Danville, Virginia is the only one who tops it. And I would offer this to you, that the most environmentally friendly and green home that you can have is the one that's already built. And you have Talbot Hall to work with here. Don't let it be taken apart by the divisiveness that may be here between the LLC at this point and the foundation. I think that should be insisted that they work together to try to come up with this compromise to preserve the historic character of the property. So I don't know that you can say that, that we're going to have a ferry farm incident here like we had in Virginia Beach, which is really very sad. But I can tell you, too, that when they hit this property for development, they're going to end up with more coins and more things they're going to find.
Thank you, Ms. Yosinski.
You're welcome.
Next, Mr. Mark Perrow?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Mark Perrow. I reside at 950 Hanover Avenue in the city of Norfolk, and I am vice chair of the Talbot Hall Foundation. I'm going to depart from my prepared remarks, and I just really want to address two things. Number one, what is the impact of your approval of this PDR Development District? Let there be no ambiguity about it. If you approve this and the project is built, the historic significance of Talbot Hall will be destroyed. This is not a subjective statement. This is what the National Park Service has, who is in this country, not only administers the National Park, the Parks, but they also administer the National Register of Historic Places. And they set out criteria for determining what, evaluating whether something is historically significant. And there is a three-stage process that includes looking first at the setting of the historic resource, and then the integrity of it, and then its significance. The Talbot, the Talbot West LLC proposal by building new homes between the house and the river, and very close on it, and each side with a web of roads on the, around the front of it, by any measure, not just my opinion, will eliminate Talbot Hall's setting as a plantation house on the river, by cutting it off from the river, as Mr. Taylor said. And by doing that, it's questionable that they'll be able to get state tax credits to facilitate this difficult renovation that Ms. McClellan referred to. And it's very likely the house will decline and be neglected and eventually be torn down, despite the good intentions of all involved. So you, it's before you, if you approve this, you are essentially approving the destruction of Talbot Hall as a historic resource. So we are asking you not to do that, at least not now, and let there be a dialogue between the interested parties to come up with a solution that would preserve its historic significance and yet allow reuse, redevelopment, a sale by the diocese to occur. But you can't, but the only way that's going to happen is if you do not approve this rezoning proposal. Because if you do, you will destroy the significance, and Talbot Hall will be lost to us. We may have an artifact, an orphaned artifact, in the middle of a subdivision, but it'll also be cut off from its historic context that it'll have little or no value. Second point, there's a lot of concern by the Civic League and others as to what will happen if we don't do this. Maybe something really bad will happen. Well, number one, I think as a planning commission, you have to operate out of confidence. If you always operate it out of fear for bad things that would happen, you would inevitably embrace mediocrity almost routinely. Because anyone can come up and say, if you don't approve my project, something worse will happen. Can I have one more minute?
You do, sir.
There, Mr. Taylor talked about what, what could be worked out. The ideal thing, and the thing that the Talbot Hall Foundation has been working most towards, is a reorientation of the lots, not a major one, but enough to restore the front lot, to keep the front lot in the connection to the river, and some buffering on the sides in front of the house. Not a huge amount, but a reasonable amount. And this could be done with Ms. Talbot's lot without requiring the LLC to give up any of the 14 homes they desire. And we, we really need to have a dialogue in the community in some way, and I hope you can facilitate that, to explore the feasibility of that. No, no solution's going to give everybody 100% of everything they want, but we ought to try that in good faith and see what we can come up with. If that, if the LLC is absolutely unwilling to engage in that, there's other solutions. And we were very close in December to putting together a deal to preserve the entire property.
Thank you, Mark.
We had over a million and a half dollars identified, plus a lot of grants and tax credits identified as well.
Next, speaking against this application, Leonard Coven?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. I am Leonard E. Coven. I reside at 974 Rugby Street, Norfolk, Virginia. This time last year, residents driving down Corpru Avenue near Norfolk State University witnessed the slow and painful demolition of the Norfolk Community Hospital. The scene was disheartening to many, many, many of us who knew the building as a symbol of African-American economic empowerment and determination during the Depression. I was born in Arkansas. I am not a native of Norfolk, but I have made it my home, and I have bought a home here. During that time as a reporter, I have written numerous articles about the shared history of that old facility and how it was kept open and, and how people worked to sustain it as a hospital. And once it entered its operation hospital, as a hospital, as a facility that would serve the community. But we were not vigilant, and it is gone except for the memories. Despite promises that it will be preserved, could Talbot Hall meet the same fate once current generations and their vigilance exists the scene, as it exists or leaves the scene? Talbot Hall is one of the oldest buildings in Norfolk. It was the centerpiece of a plantation where blacks unfortunately worked, bound by the institution of slavery. But each nail and brick used to build that master's house was done by the hands of my black ancestors. They also worked in nearby fields and performing other skills needed to make it a symbol of American capitalism, even after slavery, to sustain their families when they were free. During the Civil War, according to lore, a black slave was left behind to tend to the place once the Confederates abandoned a camp which was encircling it. Union soldiers had planned to burn the place down. But that slave revealed a federal, a federalist seal connecting its history to the Union, deterring the Blue Coast from destroying it. If he had not been so vigilant, we would not be standing here today discussing this issue. According to NSU historian Dr. Cassandra Newby Alexander, during the 20s, 30s, 40s, and 50s, when Jim Crow segregation in Norfolk was the norm, Talbot Hall was a site of events where blacks and whites participated in rare instances of interracial mingling. Norfolk's history is a racially diverse and layered one. Too often in previous years, we have seen symbols of that reality in the form of old homes and other buildings fall to the wayside for progress. But to appreciate, but to appreciate the progress of Norfolk, and to appreciate the progress Norfolk is now experiencing, to ensure its future, elements of its past must be saved to tell its history to future generations. While Norfolk community is gone now, Talbot Hall is one of many symbols of that past we must preserve to make that a reality. I do thank you.
Thank you, Leonard. Next up against this application, Ann Richardson?
Good afternoon, Chairman Fraley and other members of the commission. My name is Ann Richardson, and I reside at 514 Carlaw Way in the Talbot Park section. My husband and I have been homeowners in Norfolk for 29 years, 23 years in West Ghent, a year in Lock Haven, and now the last five years in Talbot Hall. I'm one of the people that received the letter because I live within 300 feet of Talbot Hall. My husband and I received the letter, and thank you. I've heard much talk and many promises about the efforts of the Talbot Hall West LLC to preserve Talbot Hall. And I really do thank all of you for your efforts, and I know the efforts are sincere. But what is missing from this rhetoric is any legal language that requires and ensures that the Talbot Hall manor house will be preserved for the enjoyment of future generations. There are no plans for conservation easements on the property. And these easements are what makes preserving such a, such a property possible. The tax credits make this possible. It's, as we've heard from other speakers, it's almost impossible without these conservation easements. I have also heard much rhetoric about how the Talbot Hall Foundation, of which I am part, has brought nothing to the table. The truth is that we had members of the Trust for Public Land and several other groups, which I'm not going to mention here because Mr. Taylor, Dr. Taylor was uncomfortable with mentioning them. But there were a number of groups that came to our meetings. We had a commitment for state funds from the very same state funding agency that recently made possible the new park in Portsmouth. We had a commitment from them. We also had a verbal assurance that was confirmed in the minutes of a meeting that the Episcopal Diocese of Southern Virginia would give our group a 30-day right of refusal if another offer was put on the table. And unfortunately, there's been kind of a breakdown in the communication. We sent copies of the minutes to the diocese to remind them of this commitment. But alas, this, this verbal agreement in minutes was not, was not respected. I've just returned from a visit to Mount Vernon. And while the Talbets were certainly not George Washington and his family, there are no small number of similarities not George Washington and his family, there are no small number of similarities between Mount Vernon and Talbot Hall. Talbot Hall is only 35 years younger than Mount Vernon itself. Both homes have commanding views and connections to the rivers that acted as superhighways in the late 1700s and early 1800s. Both properties served as large working farms. Because I was there last Tuesday, and it was spring break, there were many schoolchildren there with their families, and it was a joy to watch these children have hands-on experiences in the house, the stables, the smokehouse, the grist mill, as well as the house itself. Much learning was taking place. May I have another minute?
Absolutely, right ahead.
On the same trip, I visited Kenmore and Fredericksburg. Both of these properties, it's hard to imagine that now, but both Mount Vernon and Kenmore were once almost lost. It's hard to imagine our country without these places, especially Mount Vernon. It's just, there's nothing else like it in American history, and I'm here to say that Talbot Hall, though not as commanding as Mount Vernon, there are strong similarities. As a native Richmonder, unfortunately, I grew up hearing that Norfolk set the example for what not to do for historic preservation. I urge you to move slowly and cautiously here. Make sure that we are proceeding in a way that respects the rights of all of our citizens, and the rights and interests of all of our citizens, and future generations. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next against this application, Mary Louise O'Brien.
My name is Mary Louise O'Brien. I live at 520 Talbot Hall Road, where we resided for 39 years, and we are directly across the street from the Manor House. I'm speaking against the proposed rezoning of Talbot Hall. When you walk on the grounds of Talbot Hall, you cannot help but be inspired by the beautiful ancient trees that you find on the land surrounding the Manor House. Most of the trees are native Virginian and include live oak trees dating from the late 19th century. Mitten Talbot was a noted horticulturist who purchased many varieties of trees overseas and brought them home to his land. You can still find some of the trees he planted in front of his house, fanning in two rows and pointing to the sunset that would determine the best time for planting his crops. Though the development group's intentions may be to preserve some of these trees, it is certain that the sighting of the proposed new homes or damage from their construction will lead to the destruction of many of them. For this reason, I cannot support the proposed zoning amendments for the building of residential units. For over 100 years, the live oaks have lived at Talbot Hall and are now approaching their prime. How tragic that the citizens of Norfolk would have to wait another 100 years to see their likes again. I ask you to take a step toward preservation and save this precious land from destruction for our children and our grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Stephen Dexter. Peter T. Underwood.
Proceed to the next speaker.
Lynn Roth Taylor.
My name is Lynn Roth Taylor. I live at 516 Oak Grove Road, Norfolk, Virginia, 23505. As a teacher, I learned long ago that the most powerful lessons are taught through our five senses. Fortunately, our ancestors had the wisdom to save for us Jamestown and Williamsburg, so we as students and teachers can go there today and experience our past, see, smell, and feel our past. Those field trips are powerful lessons precisely because they are beyond the walls of the classroom. They are experiences that bombard the senses. But why do that? Because students of all ages at different times in their development ask, who am I beyond my family? And where did I and all the people in my community come from? What happened before I got here? These seem like obvious questions to us, but to young people, the concept of the past and how to interpret its meaning and its impact is a challenge. If we save Talbot Hall and the space along the river, we can answer their questions by saying, come with me, and you can see the house they lived in, smell the river and the magnolias, hear the story of the families, both white and black, who toiled there, and know how they helped build our city of Norfolk. Please save Talbot Hall and its historic place along the river, so students and teachers can learn together about who we are now by studying who we were then. What a marvelous field trip Talbot Hall would be. Would we be Virginia without Jamestown and Williamsburg? Can you imagine Virginia without Jamestown and Williamsburg? I can't imagine Norfolk without Talbot Hall and its place along the river. I hope you can't either. Please save Talbot Hall and its place along the river, so one day the students and teachers of Norfolk can thank you for being wise stewards of one of Norfolk's most historically valuable resources. Talbot Hall and its place along the river is a powerful lesson waiting to be taught. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
You're welcome.
Ann Fitzgibbon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Ann Fitzgibbon. My address is 5037 Pleasant Avenue in Norfolk, Virginia. Let me get my bookmark. I'm here this afternoon to stand with my Norfolk neighbors and ask you to please preserve Talbot Hall and the precious green space surrounding the historic structure. The Friends of Talbot Hall have many good reasons for preserving the space, but let me suggest what I think is the most logical reason, and it's right here in this document, the Norfolk Recreation Master Plan. I appreciate that my friend and former neighbor, Mr. Newcombe, quoted Plan Norfolk 2030, but it is my understanding that this part of this plan is also part of the city's master plan, and therefore also a guiding document. There's a lot of information in this document, including the fact that parks improve the property values of surrounding communities and cities at large. But amongst all the data which verifies that we need more green space in our city, there is also an exciting vision for our city's park system. This statement is a wonderful facet of that vision. Quote, "Every park recreation and open space improvement should reflect Norfolk's heritage and character." And there is this from Section 4-18. Many people are unaware of the impressive historic resources in Norfolk. One major of example is a collection of 18th and 19th century farmhouses that spread along the city's tidal rivers, particularly along the Lafayette River and its tributaries. Included among that is Talbot Hall. And there's this. While the bulk of opportunities to enhance a community character are in the upgrade of existing parks, the city may want to consider the acquisition of significant properties to include in the parks and open space system. Sadly, our park system is suffering from benign neglect, and now it is being aggressively cannibalized. School sites, a significant part of our parks' inventory, are being actively marketed for sale. Of course, budgets are always a challenge, but we also know that cities everywhere have good examples and best practices for investing in their park systems and getting tremendous returns on those investments. I hope you'll see today as an opportunity to begin the good work of implementing the city's master parks plan by granting more time before this decision is made. Working together, let Talbot Hall and the surrounding open space be the rebirth of a park system that will improve the quality of life and the property values for every Norfolk citizen. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Justin Seraphin.
My name is Justin Seraphin. I live at 1001 Page Street in Charlottesville, Virginia, 22903. I'm an architectural historian by training and currently sit on Charlottesville's Board of Architectural Review. I work as statewide Director of Preservation Initiatives and Engagement for Preservation Virginia, which this year celebrates its 125th anniversary and whose founding has ties to Norfolk. Preservation Virginia, a private nonprofit organization and statewide historic preservation leader, is dedicated to perpetuating and revitalizing Virginia's cultural, architectural, and historic heritage, thereby ensuring that historic places are integral parts of the lives of present and future generations of Virginians, and I would argue Americans. From the ongoing archaeological program at Historic Jamestown to our annual Most Endangered Historic Sites program, the mission of Preservation Virginia is to preserve, promote, and serve as an advocate for the state's irreplaceable historic places for the cultural, economic, and educational benefits of everyone. In 2012, Preservation Virginia included Talbot Hall on its Most Endangered Historic Sites list, citing as a threat the unknown future of the site as a result of the Diocese of Virginia's decision to sell it. At that time, it was noted that, quote, "The view shed of the site located on the Lafayette River remains in much the same condition as it did in the 18th century," end quote, a characterization that aligns with previous assessments by the Virginia Department of Historic Resources and other local and regional groups. With the benefit of statewide experience with historic resources and 18th to 19th century sites like Talbot Hall, it is clear to Preservation Virginia that what remains of the plantation's historic landscape setting is an absolutely necessary component of its historical integrity and thus possible eligibility for the National Register of Historic Places and thus potential tax credits. Talbot Hall's orientation and connection to the Lafayette River is a key component of its historical significance, which would be negated by the current plan to surround it in front with new housing. As the last remaining antebellum plantation house in Norfolk with its setting fully intact, divorcing the primary facade and the entrance of the main house from its historic link to the river would severely undermine its viability and public perception as a significant historic site. For example, imagine Virginia's well-loved plantation house is located along the James River, cut off from the very waterway that served as their literal front yards and their transportation and commerce links to the wider world. Also, what would be the impact of visiting sites like Monticello if the views to the landscape beyond were filled with development? This potential loss of one of Norfolk's remaining resources, the type of historic resource that the general plan for the city of Norfolk and its zoning ordinances recognize as significant, 30 seconds, significant to the promotion and well-being of Norfolk and its citizens, should be thoughtfully considered. The worst outcome for all parties involved is to recognize 10 or 20 years down the road that an unfortunate mistake was made by divorcing Talbot Hall from its historically significant setting. Nearly all successful historic preservation projects require the collaboration of private and public entities alike. The Talbot Hall Foundation should be applauded for the thoughtful ways that they've considered how the site can be developed while still maintaining its integrity. With subtle modifications to the plan as presented, in order to protect the view shed, a workable solution seems quite possible. Preservation Virginia urges the Planning Commission and the city of Norfolk to continue working with the interested parties to come to a solution that will allow development in a smart and sensitive way while maintaining this important sense of place in Norfolk. Thank you.
Justin, tell me once again, what's your affiliation?
Preservation Virginia. We're out of Richmond, and we're a statewide nonprofit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Ann Fitzgibbon. She just... I'm sorry. Joyce Neff.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Joyce Neff, and I live at 6603 Catherine Street in Norfolk, Virginia. I'm a 17-year resident of Talbot Park, and I can see the southern border of the property up for rezoning from my backyard on Catherine Street. During the 17 years that my husband and I have lived in the neighborhood, we have followed all the required rules, regulations, and voluntary procedures to protect the Lafayette River, which our property borders. That includes a two-year permitting process to implement wetlands restoration on our property, not cutting down any mature trees, not dumping leaves or grass clippings into the river, and meeting all the requirements to become a River Star home. In addition, when I take my neighborhood walks every morning, I frequently include the Talbot Hall property as part of my route. One reason I walk there is that it's the only, the only park-like space in the whole neighborhood. There are no parks in Talbot Park, just schoolyards and churches with large parking lots. In 2005, the Trust for Public Land, in cooperation with Norfolk City officials, did an extensive analysis of Norfolk's park system and found it woefully inadequate, as other speakers have mentioned. Only 2% of the city's 42,000 acres are reserved for public parkland, and Norfolk's 230,000 residents have access to only 858 acres of public green space. The city would have to nearly triple the size of its park system to reach the standard of 11 acres of open space per 1,000 residents maintained by comparable-sized cities. As an aside, Norfolk City's own website states that we have 12 dog parks, but only six community parks. This year, the U.S. City Parks Alliance and the Rand Corporation are replicating that 2005 survey. It's time for Norfolk to do something about its poor ranking when it comes to green space. Ideally, what I'd like is that the Talbot Hall property become a dedicated park for our neighborhood rather than private space with 14 homes. I understand that's the ideal. So if not that, then I would like to ask that the developers of Talbot Hall be required to follow the same permitting process and regulatory process that other homeowners have had to follow concerning shoreline development. For example, consultation and approval from the Virginia Marine Resources Commission, the City of Norfolk Wetlands Board, the Chesapeake Bay Foundation, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. I'd also like to ask that the neighborhood be kept informed during the site plan review process, and not too late. Can I have another?
Have a minute, go right ahead.
Okay. I'd also ask that the developers save the trees within 100 feet of the shoreline, just as I have been required to do. It's ludicrous to suggest that you can mitigate the removal of 200-year-old native live oak trees by planting small, young trees in their place. I'd also ask that the development not be gated, so that residents can walk the new streets as we walk the current streets. I can't count how many times inspectors visited my own backyard projects, required that we redraw the plans, gave us detailed advice about how to protect the wetlands and the riverfront, and stipulated what we could and could not plant. At times, it was a burden, but it was one we gladly bore because of our love of the river and the environment we were determined to protect. I ask that if you must approve the zoning request before us today, that you require no less from the developers of the Talbot Hall property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neff. With that, it appears that we've had an equal number of speakers on both sides of this application, and I would want to give everyone an opportunity to speak, but we have been here a good time. Could we acknowledge at least all those folks who've signed up against this? We ask you to stand so we at least can acknowledge your presence here today. We thank you very kindly. We're moving to our rebuttal phase at this point.
I would suggest...
Sir, sir, thank you. We're moving to our rebuttal phase at this point. Mr. Trent.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Tim Trent. I'm an attorney with Kaufman &amp; Knolle's, offices at 150 West Main Street here in the city of Norfolk. It's my privilege to be here today to entertain the rebuttal period on behalf of the... It's my privilege to be here today to entertain the rebuttal period on behalf of Talbot Hall Mr. De Shields and the members of Talbot Hall West would like me to start by giving credit where credit is due. You have heard tremendous expertise and passion from a group of folks that have spent a lot of time and energy in review and critique of this project, and I think their goals are ultimately the same as the members of Talbot Hall West, and that is to see this property in its next iteration be something that somehow preserves and protects the character of the area. And if it weren't for them, and they're very loud and passionate voices and persistent voices, Mr. De Shields would fully acknowledge the project would not be what it is today. Notably, the retention of Paige Pollard to do a formal historical assessment of the structure and to offer recommendations to Mr. Lindsay and his foundation about how to be the proper steward of the property and to address many of the questions about its future that have been raised by the members of the Talbot Hall Foundation today in identifying and securing a benefactor, a very material and solid and well-known benefactor for this property. Just to answer a question, Ms. McClellan, in response to your interest about the drive at -- I think everybody's correct. Mr. Taylor's right that there was an original, or say, an original, there was some historic parjing, as it's known, but subsequent to that, there's been a modern drive at apply that has compromised the integrity of the structure that's been confirmed by Ms. Pollard in the course of her report. One of the things that we would invite those that are so passionate and have invested so much in the property is to join with Mr. Lindsay and his foundation and the results of Ms. Pollard's report and try and make sure that that effort in the future of the manor house has the benefit of that knowledge, that expertise, and most significantly, that Tremendous concessions have been made to try and address the concerns of the community and particularly those that have been vocal today. We've talked about retention of the historic expert preserving, securing a benefactor for the property, but also the arrangement, and this isn't the best slide, of the lot lines between, you know, of the homes that separate Talbot Hall Manor House from the water to specifically and intentionally bisect the manor house so that the homes that are built on those lots are offset, obviously, from that property line and preserve that open view shed to the water in respect of the concerns that have been expressed about the importance of that. I understand that the critics of the proposal would like to see further change, and unfortunately, the changes that they're asking for are material and negative and challenge and would eliminate the financial feasibility of the project. They present both present acquisition and development feasibility impediments, as well as with the extension of the water line, of the property to the water line and the stewardship associated with a public shoreline, exponentially greater future maintenance and stewardship costs. I would respectfully commend to the critics that the enemy of great is perfect and that this plan is a great one and one that should be embraced and that they can continue to align themselves with the stewardship of the manor house and have a tremendous impact on its future and its benefit to the city of Norfolk. What is certain is that there is no other existing and viable reuse plan that offers more in the way of conservation, historic preservation, and compatibility with the Talbot Hall West plan than the Talbot Hall West plan. Both sides seem to be unhappy. I know the Talbot Hall West folks feel beaten down and somewhat abused by the process. They have really seen themselves as stewards and have, you know, been felt challenged in that capacity. It's been expressed very clearly this afternoon that there are still some open concerns among members of the community, and I would respectfully submit to you all that in my over a decade in doing land use work in Hampton Roads, when both sides are unhappy, the application is typically in the right spot, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Trant. Any questions on Mr. Trant, Commissioners? Go right ahead, Brad.
I'm wondering, one of the thoughts I had initially when I first heard the proposal was what would keep someone from coming in there and tearing down the main house and subdividing the property? And then I listened to the people that were against it, and they talked about a conservation easement, and they talked about a view to the river. I don't really see any way of assuring that the property, that the house is there, would be preserved. Am I missing something?
Mr. Law, perhaps what I would offer is this, that the rezoning that is proposed does not include the Talbot Hall Manor Site. That will remain institutional in nature, so any reuse would require a zoning change that would come back before this proposal.
Excuse me, Ms. Trant. That's not how this ordinance is written, and that's not how the application was interpreted.
I apologize. So you were interpreting the application to include the manor house in the residential?
Yes.
There's a planned development district, sir, that was created for it. It calls out the creation of 14 lots, and then separately, it calls out the preservation of Talbot Hall.
Certainly. The idea of a conservation easement is a good one and one that is in the consideration of Mr. Lindsay and his foundation. In order to secure that and to be eligible for a conservation easement, particularly an historic conservation easement, a formal assessment, you know, has to be done to characterize the history of that property, and there is considerable question about, you know, the stewardship of that property over the years and how it has impacted its historic integrity. So what type of easement and what commitments would be required as a donee and then a donor and a recipient of that easement are still being worked out. I would respectfully submit that the commitment by Mr. Lindsay, the formation of the foundation, are some of the greatest assurances that anybody in this city could hope to secure for the stewardship of that property and that nothing is ever set in stone. No law, no ordinance ever ensures with absolute certainty the future, but based on the history and reputation of Mr. Lindsay, his historic stewardship, generally, I put a lot of confidence and would respectfully submit that there is a lot of confidence to be had in that.
A question from someone.
Mr. Trant, thank you.
You mentioned a formal assessment that needs to happen. The documentation provided by Ms. Pollard and the Commonwealth Preservation Group is not sufficient, I assume, for that?
Her assessment at this point is preliminary. It has not been completed. She has done a tour of the home and the grounds and is continuing her evaluation.
It's my understanding, and by the way, I applaud everybody in here. Everybody here cares about Norfolk and the preservation, and this is a very complex issue. The historical relevance of the house is compromised. The opportunity to be considered for a historic preservation easement, I apologize, I'm probably not using the right terminology, really will be in a social context, social history context, and as such, that piece of land and that view shed behind it is probably pretty relevant. So if that easement is sought and that land is not there, it's just concerning to me. And I'm just, am I correct in that the LLC and the foundation still have yet to meet to discuss?
I would say that is not an accurate characterization of the relationship between the Talbot Hall West and the foundation. It is true that there has not been a formal sit-down meeting, but the interest and expectations and concerns of the Talbot Hall Foundation have been made very clear. I mean, they, over the years, they, or over the intervening period while this application was under review, they have been a party to and present at and participated in Civic League meetings, which is the city's recognized forum for community engagement, and the community Civic League and recognized sort of community engagement mechanism, as you know, has endorsed the project overwhelmingly.
The other point that I would ask, and this is what I'm wrestling with, we're all asking what's in the best public interest today, right? That's really what we're here to do. And so the question is, what is the public that we're addressing? Is it Talbot Hall and those neighbors, or is it the interests of the city of Norfolk and the history that we have? And that's the thing that I'm grappling with. So that's more of a statement. I apologize, not a question.
What I would say, Ms. McClellan, in response, is that the concession, as Mr. De Shields said, this is not a real estate investment group, and the financial feasibility of this project is, what is proposed is only doable because these are owner occupants, because these are not folks trying to make a profit. So it is already challenged in a financial feasibility by, just by its very nature of being a cooperative and not a real estate investment proposal. And the type of concession, that physical connection to the water that is so, seems so interested to the critics of the project is simply financially infeasible. It would kill the financial feasibility of the project in this way. One, the loss of land and lots and the incremental increase in cost that that would present to the ownership, an already stretched financial proposal, and the ongoing stewardship. When you add more than just a manor house to the stewardship, the preservation effort, you add an extension of yard area and a shoreline, the exponential, the costs of stewardship go up exponentially and would eliminate the feasibility of this project, and we'd be back to an institutional zoning and all that it might bring to this project.
I absolutely appreciate and agree with the costs associated with this, as living in a historic district. There was a mention by the foundation that they have funds available and/or grants available, and I'm just wondering if some of that financial hardship that would come from possibly providing that watershed view could be offset by the foundation's money. And I just, I don't know that these things have been discussed just yet, and that's why I think, anyway.
I think they have in clear enough terms, Ms. McClellan. I mean, obviously, I'm biased, but I would respectfully submit that they have been. What I would submit to you, and it sounds like you have some personal experience with this, that whatever financial resources, and we have some sense of what they are, that the foundation and its members and its grants might be able to bring to the table, all of that and many, many, many more contributions are going to be required just to preserve and respect the history of the manor house. It just doesn't work. The property swap that's been proposed has been considered by the Talbot Hall West Partnership. That land is for sale, and it's not for gift, it's not for swap, and it doesn't achieve, it doesn't achieve parity in terms of the financial impact that's being requested to be absorbed. We simply cannot stretch the financial proposal anymore. We cannot privately fund a public park of the magnitude that's been proposed beyond the stewardship and gracious commitment of Mr. Lindsay thus far.
Any other questions on Mr. Trant? Thank you, sir. Before we hear from the opponents, in the interest of fairness, at the end of the original period when the opponents or proponents spoke, I did give those who had a compelling desire to speak as they stood to come forward, no one chose to. I would like to give the opponents the same opportunity. We didn't do that before. Are there any folks who are against this project who would have a compelling desire to speak? I see three, four, six. Is there any way we can consolidate those remarks if we're going to be repeating what we've heard?
I represent the Oregon State.
All right, let's go, we'll go ahead with the six people since everybody has a compelling desire, sir. And before we do that, I've got a request for a five-minute recess. Okay? Thank you.
[laughing]